Aloha out there in television, radio and internet land. I'm Jason Schwartz, your host of the Neutral Zone, MauiNeutralZone.com campaign 2022 special edition. We have candidates. I'm a candidate you know for county council Kalalui, but all of Maui's three islands vote for all the candidates. I have another candidate, a young and exciting, well, I'm 71, so everyone's young, but an experienced young person who's Jordan Hocker. Thank you and welcome to the show and welcome to the political arena. Aloha.
Thank you so much, Jason. It's really good to be here and to be welcomed into the arena. It certainly is an arena. There's so much going on right now with our Maui county elections.
I know that our audience, some know you, but if you could help by kind of giving a quick synopsis, if you can, of you. And then what made you decide this time it was time to run? I'll let you take it from there.
Yeah, so my name is Jordan Hocker. I live, I live up country in an area that's just before Keokea, known as Waiahuli. I am a community advocate. My background really is in homeless advocacy as well as trying to tackle our maternal mortality rates and overall try to find as much health for mothers and families through the birthing process. I'm also a sustainable science management major at UH Maui College. I had been going to school for a while for, for human services and then the pandemic hit and I looked around and saw maybe the holes that had opened up, the sinkholes, so to speak, and, and really realized that if we didn't get our, our basic fundamental needs really like food and water and shelter together, that you could, you could be the best mental health professional out there, but you'd be bailing water out of a sinking ship. So, you know, my educational background and focus is, is in sustainable science management. And, um, you know, I stepped forward to run because I noticed last election, there was no challenger for the seat, just the incumbent. And I remember voting last time and said, you know, people, people deserve a choice and deserve someone to vote for. And then when the pandemic hit and my tourism job sort of dried up due to the shutdown and, um, and whatnot, and the county council became available via Blue Jeans and all the committee meetings that I could attend from home, I said, well, why don't I focus on, on what our governments, what our local governments doing to help us right now? You know, like, let me, let me get a clear picture of this, uh, cause I'm a researcher at heart. So, um, that really started my, I would say intensive journey into really getting a clearer picture as to how Maui county council uh, functioned and, and what was going on in local government and how that directly affected our livelihood. So I'm, I'm a working class person, you know, we got knocked down several pegs by the pandemic, my family and, and I want to see other, other working class people thriving instead of us just trying to, to survive. And I know that, you know, we have a lot of different interests here in Maui county, and I want to make sure that the interests of the people are balanced with those, those outside entities. So a little bit about me and why I'm, I'm stepping forward.
So I appreciate that. I hear the sound sort of an echo. I don't know how you're, you must be in Kula. You have questionable internet. Is that possible?
Um, I don't.
I heard like when I speak, you'll hear it. It's like an echo sometimes, but if our listeners are fine, we'll be fine. Can you hear okay with me?
I can. There's no echo on my end.
Okay. Okay. Well, um, I hear you. When, when I think of up country Kula, that's a funny seat. Charmaine Tavoris, I think was up there, had it before, and then it was Yuki and Charmaine went on to be mayor and all that, right? And Yuki's really been on the council a while. Pretty strong candidate. Anything specific? I mean, you're running in general, but anything specific that as you're going of viewer might say, ah, there's a difference that I can note that I might tweak things left or right. You know, I think that's right is not how we choose. Hopefully we choose by issues some and also demeanor. Yuki's very congenial to me. I always have excellent conversations, but others have had all different experiences over the time. And publicly we see different pieces. And, you know, I'm just always wondering. Have you seen people up there in your area? Do you know many people in your area that are politically involved? Are you involved with the Kula Community Association at all, any of that group?
Yeah. So my introduction to the Kula Community Association was actually through sort of a neighbor volunteer effort up country. Um, when a lot of the, you know, when the shutdown happened, there was a large amount of dumping happening on Pulehuhu Road, the dump road. And, um, you know, I had, I, I drive up it frequently because it's a bit nicer of a climb on my car than the highway is. Um, but you know, my, my partner, Tom and I were going, wow, we really should get out here and clean up some of this trash because it's pretty, it's pretty bad. And I saw somebody, I saw a man named Mark White, who is, you know, now my, my friend and, uh, post on the Nextdoor app that he was planning on going out and cleaning it. And so we, um, some of us up country residents got together and started cleaning up the road and, you know, paying out of pocket for disposal fees for tires and things like that. So, you know, I had actually reached out to council member Yuki Lay to see if there was any way that the county could help us pay for it. And I know that we did go in front of the Kula Community Association to, to sort of talk about what we were doing. Um, you know, I do, I do know folks up here who are politically active. Most of them are, are environmentally minded farmers. You know, and, and up country has a water infrastructure issue, you know, when the, when we get drought conditions, you know, it's, it's really our water that's, it's at stake because we pump it all the way over from Olinda and Peaholo and it's a far, it's a far way to get water. Um, so when those reservoirs are low, you know, the, the farming and the cattle ranching looks, you know, ranching looks more uncertain. And then we deal with the access deer coming down the mountain and, and eating a lot of the, the local food that's trying to be grown up here. So, you know, the up country seed is really interesting because we, we do have our infrastructure issues and, and no one seems to be really proactively approaching how we're gonna tackle that. It's just, you know, we've had the water meter waiting list, which technically doesn't exist anymore, but, um, you know, I have talked to families who their parents passed away trying to subdivide to their children and, um, and, and, or, you know, you've lived up country since the seventies and get told that, okay, your, your name's been pulled so that you can condominiumize for your family, but it's going to cost you a million dollars to be able to put in the infrastructure. Um, and then, you know, meanwhile, there are these, uh, these ag land plots that are coming up that seem to have their water meters just already uh, there, you know, so it's, it's a, you know, it's an infrastructure question and it's also like, how do we, um, how do we protect our up country residents who are here and have been here for a long time?
I hear it. Um, I'm just curious because I presented this, but I'm not sure who, how hard they're listening really. Do you know that we can get water out of the air and that for residential use that we can have in your home, something that if put on a 30 year mortgage would amortize out to be one of the smartest investments you ever made and wouldn't put a strain on water system. So waiting for a water meter, the whole system could change. People haven't explored that kind of funny. When I hear about ranch lands that are, we know there's so much gray water, you know, whatever we want to call it. Water after single use for whatever the purpose is, just gets washed away. If we could deal with the things we need clean and have it in a, in a new way, there's so many technologies. When I think about that, I'm bringing it up because at the county audience, I want you to know this is Mia's candidate, throwing his little two cents in here. The county needs to really understand that there are alternative things that they haven't been looking at or seeing clearly to put in, in motion before the crisis is so bad. I mean, how bad does water have to be? That Kula is still getting water from Olinda and Olinda's, we don't have enough water everywhere. You see all these lungs that are brown everywhere. Why haven't they taken the burden off by exploring alternatives? That really exist. You may not realize, but some of these things I've been bringing up for years now with candidates on interviews like we're having like now, where you'd think like that would kind of, when I talk about water from air, if you get on that seat in council and you sort of think you have a water problem and you never think about what I'm talking about, I would find you to be missing something. That's what's happened with me and these candidates over 13 elections. So, you know, that's, well, that's why I asked about Yuki. I always wonder, you know, I have nothing at all against her specifically, but I'm always looking for, what is it that people feel in our county? Cause we all vote for all these council people. What is it that's missing? Why are we not getting the extra help that people need? And what do you think you can do as a council person? I mean, I know I'm, I hear they keep creating new jobs, but then the people go, wait, wait, our budget is now up, but we did create 49 new jobs. Yeah. Well, yes, that does cost money. And inflation is here. A billion isn't really that high considering that, wow, let's see here. You know, it's like a very interesting game we're playing now. When people talk about, well, I think we need to be fiscally conservative. Excuse me. Do you want to give up your job? Or Ricky Hokama coming back to run after being off and knowing there's the controversy about how many times people run, knowing he's already got plenty of money. He's got plenty of experience, could be a consultant, but he decided to run. You know, that's why I ask these funny questions and create this kind of funny forum. I don't think of it as funny. I think of it as a place to talk about things openly. Well, you know, what would Ricky say? What, why wouldn't he be a consultant? Even if he was a paid consultant, but why did he feel Gabe, who's been working hard on housing, you know, we talk about issues. These council people have been working their tails off, I think, you know, and to their credit, we're making great strides. I think we need to make more and I think we need to, they, they put money in the budget, they said for a plan, an integrated plan about diversification of our economy. They haven't been listening when I've been talking with them for a long, 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 long time. That's what I'm saying. This group has sort of an old sheen, an old shine, an old way, an old culture and get somehow feel attacked. Um, do you have any, any, I don't know what I'm talking about this. I guess I'm, I'm talking more as my history here where good ideas don't happen because things, the way they are, don't like to be moved. Not only too quickly, maybe never at all. And when the public force like in Wailuku, there was meeting, there were meetings about the building of that hotel and the infrastructure thing way before Jonathan Starr and that group tried to do the hotel. And then he made a change and, you know, both were good ideas and the times changed. The public made themselves known. You have that kind of a, are you in there with that kind of a thing on these issues that I just brought up? So wildly about council, having the same people yet again, that could be there helping, they don't have to be challenging a seat. Um, or just in general, the climate we're in, how could you miss this last moment? Hurrah for Kelly King to jump into a very crowded mayor's race and what do you think that you're going to be adding as you're jumping into this? I'm really giving you a wide range to talk on all these subjects, knowing that I am kind of putting myself out here. So you can kind of know also who I am and you may have questions of me.
Well, Jason, I think, I think you really, um, you know, went around that, that very clear issue, which is that, um, one government moves slowly compared to something like the free market, right? Um, and people are reticent for change, you know, the amount that's been accomplished by the current council members. Um, the push has been so dedicated and, you know, you really need, like for instance, the issue that you're talking about with pulling water out of the air, you know, as, as someone who is studying sustainable science. And it's difficult because sustainability is really, it's a buzzword and a lot of people really love to use it. Um, but to, to really explore, um, systems thinking in the realm of policy, right? Um, you have to know what your limitations are, what system you're working with, um, before you can, before you can really be effective. And so on council, you know, the thing that I hear said, and then I agree with is the position is exactly what you make it. It's going to move as hard as you want to push it. You can get in there and coast and not do really much of anything, but shoot down other people's ideas. You know, um, and so when it comes to, to, it's that I envision that are along the realm that you're talking about, especially with water and being a lot smarter the way that we are. Um, currently, if there wasn't a, a huge environmental impact, then, um, you know, because my concern is how much water can we pull out of the air before we begin to affect our, our climate, right?
Insignificant issue. As far, I appreciate that. The, the thing that's so fun about it is there, I, there was a guy interviewed in 2005 and I saw a TED talk in like 2014 of him talking about though there are 2,700 natural things that can help in our world. He's from the Zero Emissions Research Institute, good name, right? That can create power by the weight of columns onto crystal to power a building. Things that in an island, we should be exploring, things that sound magical, that are naturally possible. And water from the air is not only possible, we've had, there was a demonstration unit, may still be sitting actually in Kula in a locked area that can create a couple of thousand gallons a day. Imagine you have a system paid for over the years that can make a house self-sustainable with water and power and how we could change the use of open lands because we can grow there because we can put our houses in different places. The potential is really, I mean, I'm not talking because I'm the inventor or I'm the one doing it. Just, I'm using as examples. There's so many things. So yeah, and I, that's why I want to be on council because when you sit off and you're giving ideas, you don't quite have the traction when you're at the table and you can lead a charge and a charge in a good way.
Yeah. And that's, that's what I think that we need in terms of our council members is people willing to lead the charge. And right now, you know, it's kind of uncertain because we've had, we've had folks who are willing to do that, you know, um, I've been, I know the work that Gabe Johnson has done on affordable housing and I know how dedicated him and his office are to doing that. Um, you know, and, and so I, I have a lot of respect for what's being done on the council currently. You know, water infrastructure is a huge issue here for up country and we are, we're so dependent on the systems that we have that it would be foolish not to explore other technologies that could help us. Or expand our, our reclaimed use, um, water, you know, every single drop of water we use here is so incredibly important. Um, you know, and I think the, the method of thinking is okay, when we run out of water in our aquifer, we'll just desalinate the ocean, right? And it's like, for me, it's that type of thinking is, um, is unfortunate. And I think has no place in, in government because it's just sort of pushing off a very pressing issue until we have an emergency and.
You, you know that the Eau Aquifer has been in, what do they say, a very, very short distance from the salt for now decades and it's been such a big problem. So then I'm really, the thing I was talking about, imagine a tax credit. No, it's not the whole answer, but it can help with the answer and make people that are feeling isolated and can't do, find a way they can do. And that's what I was sharing.
Yeah, yeah. And I, I want to see that benefit working class people, you know, because it's often with a lot of these technologies, you have people who can afford them, right? You have people who can afford to implement them. And then you have, uh, people who are just eking by, you know, and so I'd like to see a lot more of our resilience translate to, to helping our, our working class folks.
And there is again, I guess locally, what an idea of a, of a credit, a tax credit that were a tax rate to men, whatever combination happens, the, it will help. That's the whole thing. It can help the people that live here. And that's, uh, that's, I guess, another focus, housing and what are we going to do for the people that live here with the cost of everything? Any answers there? You, I guess there's no magic bullet. What do you have in mind for housing?
In terms of housing, you know, I like what's being done. Um, I think that there's a couple, a couple areas of improvement that I can see. Um, when we build affordable housing projects or when a developer comes forward to fast track um, a project that has affordable housing for it, you know, the housing doesn't remain affordable in perpetuity, right? So in there, they have to be affordable for 10 years and then you can just often sell it as market rate. Uh, and I know for sure that the industries who make a lot of money off of selling, uh, market rate homes here in, in Maui county, you know, would just hover around waiting for that 10 year mark and then, you know, show up with these offers people can't refuse, which is what happened. Throughout the, the pandemic, you know, what I heard feedback from, from people who were being kicked out of their rentals because their, the home that they were living in was going to be sold because it was just too, too hot of a market. So I'd like to see affordable housing projects in perpetuity. Um, I don't know if that is the county taking that on, you know, because there's the question like, well, if we don't make them some market rate homes, then the developer won't make any money, right? And I, I keep hearing that, you know, and I'm, and for me, not all developers, I'm not anti-development. I'm pro-smart development, meaning that you shouldn't be building affordable housing in flood plains. You should be afforded, be building affordable housing in areas that have the water and the transportation infrastructure to be able to handle the additional occupancy rate. So, um, for me, when I'm looking at affordable housing, I'm thinking, how can we preserve that affordability? Regardless of what the market is doing, because that's where we're getting the short end of the stick. Is it despite our economy taking a huge hit, that industry hasn't taken a hit. If anything, people within that industry have been making a lot of money off of our misfortune. Um, and that is to a degree how the free market works. Um, but I want, when I moved to Maui, I fell in love with the culture here and I don't want to see the culture that I fell with be displaced in that way. Um, the other thing too, is if we're going to put in more affordable housing, we have to get very smart about our water and transportation infrastructure. You know, I, I love living rurally. There are areas of the island that I don't even go to, that I try to avoid altogether because sitting in traffic is not what I want. And there are so many people on the south and west side that have no other option, right? And, and I hear that transportation or the, the congestion complaint a lot come up when new projects are proposed. Um, and I don't really ever see any solutions for that. I don't see, you know, we could, we could bait on green transportation, you know, we could really, we could beef up our public transportation system and actually make it accessible for the working class, you know, if I were to, if I didn't have a car up here, I wouldn't be able to really go to work unless it was somewhere I could walk. And that's not, um, really realistic for a lot of people. So it's, um, and then affordable housing, I want to see it in perpetuity. And I want to see some actual, um, implementations of, of good infrastructure along with it. Because right now we're, some of the affordable housing isn't actually affordable for, for local people.
I, I think a lot of the subjects we talk about are getting to be where everyone's all, we, we all know these issues are way out of whack, you know?
Right, right.
The only thing I would like to add is that the big issue of overdevelopment, we, we have to try to, that's a thing often talked about, stop the growth of the tourism industry in, in number of things. Reduce the number of short-term rentals through making it less attractive. Increase to the local. Until those houses get built, there's no question that we hear about, um, excuse my phone ringing, panther. There's no question that, uh, we're building housing 3,000 planned. Mayor's talking about, that's all great, but there's yesterday's article. Any night there could be a thousand people that are homeless right now. We are incredibly, we are not doing the job for the homeless. We don't have enough solutions. We don't have enough workers. We don't have enough answers. We don't have enough places. I keep asking that question and I have no one that says, that's an emergency. The mayor can, can take funds. I've asked the council people, Tasha Kama, others that are really caring about these things and, where's the emergency? Put up tents, put up safe zones, put up bathrooms. If we can do it for people that are coming from another country, why on an island can't we deal with this like another issue? Until we build 3,000 or then other 3,000 in the next years, whatever, what are we going to do now? That's a million dollar question. So I'm putting it out. I don't expect you to be the genie with the wand, but I really would like to hear your direction on, because I don't feel that issue is coming up strongly enough about support for the people that need more support. Put more workers there, but create more solutions anyway.
Yeah, that's an issue that, that is really personal to me. Um, you're right, there is a lack of urgency and I feel like pre-pandemic, we could say, oh, well, people aren't working hard enough or lazy, or we could make up all of these myths about people, but so many of us got knocked down. You know, I say six pegs, you know, like where it would take us, um, years and years and years to catch up from, from what we experienced, but to answer your question, I think it is the current administration's policy that is preventing us from meeting people exactly where they're at. Um, it's an issue that I'm, I'm really well versed on because I see what we do right now. And so currently we have a, what's called by the, the Department of Housing and Human Concerns, a compassionate relocation program. And, um, I'm, I'm air quoting that because it's, it's anything but compassionate. Um, and I had seen, I had seen something, for instance, the, I believe it was the city of San Jose had started to say, like put up parking lots where people could get showers, where people could get services, where people could pitch tents. That sort of things like central hubs where people could get what they want or, and what they need, you know, really the baseline stuff. Because another, a big area of myth is that people who are unsheltered here in Maui county aren't working and that's, couldn't be further from the truth. Most people who are homeless or living out of their cars have jobs. They just can't get a leg up, uh, to be able to then get housing. And even the nonprofits that we task with things like shelters have had a And even the nonprofits that we task with things like shelters have had a diminished capacity due to COVID. And you have to do things like call every single day. So say you're on the streets and you want housing, you have to find a phone, hope that you have the money to pay for a phone. And then you have to call them relentlessly every single day to see if they have any space for you. And then you have to go through their, you know, six month program. You know, I feel like maybe before these entities that were helping people by paying their deposit to get into rent or paying a couple months rent to like really get them set up. Now our rents are so high that that model is imploding. You know, we don't have enough rental inventory that's accessible to the point where these nonprofits can't even really help people effectively.
And, and you mentioned about the homeless that are working, the homeless that are not working need to be served also. I've found an incredible, the, the hospitals are dismissive of, of a lot of people and things are getting way out of control where I agree that the people that are working, but I just am trying to broaden the public to understand that this tremendous need. Somehow this is at a level of emergency right now. That's, I think.
And that's how, I agree with you, that's how it should be dealt with. We are at a level of emergency, people are, you know, people are dying on the streets and that's not an exaggeration.
No, it's not.
That's why when I talk about my platform, I say housing for all, meaning housing for people who can't afford to work, people who are disabled, people who are experiencing mental health crisis, substance abuse crisis, because for me, having gone through housing insecurity as a teenager, having been met with a lot of these challenges, younger person, you know, I don't forget what that was like. And I would really challenge anyone to try to keep their headspace in a good, positive, uplifted, mentally healthy place while not having, knowing where your food or your water or anything's going to come from. So it's, when I say housing for all, I mean for the entire spectrum because it really, I, I think that there are a lot of myths that are perpetuated that, that kind of protect people from that, that reality, which is that our, you know, our unsheltered residents are our neighbors. They're people in our community, whether you agree with where they're at or whatever the judgment is in your head. Everybody deserves that dignity and to be treated with that respect. And so, you know, there was a recent appropriation that was set aside, I think $200,000 by council member King or actually a safe parking lot, like a hub. Because right now, you know, if it's on, if, if our homeless folks have ended up on private property or county property, they're served with essentially eviction notices by, by the police and the private land owner or by the county and the police.
And I've had people say to me about that idea, not in my backyard. That is the big problem, the NIMBY problem.
Yeah, the NIMBY problem is, is huge and, and you know, I think at a certain point, tough, you know, no, it's not be in your backyard, but how, you know, it, it's hard for me to wrap my head around, I have a lot of compassion and empathy, having come from a more unstable background than I have now and, you know, had certain rental assistance not been in place, like I don't know that my housing would have been secure this entire time, you know?
I can, I can tell you, again, I hope you don't mind I call you young. There are people my age that are not able to afford housing. They try to get on a list for housing and they're told there's a five and eight year waiting list. That's not housing, that's a list of never, never land. Try it when you're 70 and 75. Try it when you can't walk and you have challenges, when you have things, the level of challenge now is great. And the, when I say emergency, I could scream it. Because the people around me that I see hurting, that rely on me, and I don't have much to offer, but I am the one reaching out. I talk to our audience often and tell them, hey, if you see someone hurting, help them. There's not enough help. You can be that good Samaritan, you know, no matter what religion you're in, you know what right and wrong is and so much need. But I don't know how we're going to get, do you think the new mayor? One of the myriad of people or the same mayor, but you think we're going to get to that level of awareness and action? Or is this going to get worse?
It depends on whether or not they're going to listen. I mean, the current mayor's administration, I've been exceptionally disappointed with the way that they've been handling our, our unsheltered residents and and I've seen it firsthand, you know, exceptionally disappointed. We need, I'd say it's as simple as an administration shift, but we really need someone who isn't looking down their nose at anybody or where they're at. But instead saying, you know, as a mayor, I am responsible to everyone here in Maui County. And I want to step forward and do the right thing because it really is doing the right thing. At the end of the day. And because the lack of the heads of things like housing and human concerns, the people who are at the head of those departments have a large amount to do with how that policy is implemented.
Don't you have to have a solution before you, I mean, if, if you have a bunch of people living somewhere and you're going to rouse them, shouldn't you have a place to put them?
Yeah, I laugh because that, that question is, is one I ask myself and other, other folks who are working to advocate for unsheltered residents are asking all the time. If there are not enough shelter beds, if there is not enough housing, you should not be evicting people from the place that they've settled here. Period. And I can say from firsthand from my experience, we do not have those services come right alongside when an eviction is happening. That's not, that's not what's currently happening. And, and so, yeah, I'm, I'm with you 100% on that. When I say housing for all, you know, I, I want to look into things like managed encampments.
I've been, you know, there's a few people that are, I call my champions, like Lisa Darcy is out there working with people and Sheri Yamana. And I check in myself with people I know that are homeless that an encampment that is safe, that has facility, you talk about city of San Jose. I talk about NIMBY, not a Mack bike yard. Imagine with the transportation, if we had more than one hub, but we could do this so that, and give these people that are in these programs, a potential work path, a potential hope path, a potential something other than dirt and watching things around them go on as usual without them having any hope. I, I don't know where, is that a leadership role from a mayor? Can they instill that in directors? Can they instill that in their workers when they don't have enough arms and legs? How do we figure this out? How do we create more work and more jobs with no money?
Yeah.
We, we work with the people that own this, but we have the richest people in the world here. Why don't, you know, that you hear, ever heard the word about grabbing the low hanging fruit? People like to grab the thing that's easiest or in, in investment, the one that makes the most profit. There's some that would help that are low hanging, that maybe don't make profit as much, but they really help. We need to find a way to shift things so that on an island, people shift to the things that will help with our environment's needs, the housing thing, or you know, you talk about the people who want to make money. We can shift this, it's all a matter of who's looking at this in a new way, outside of this box. That they, that seems to be the box. Cause I, we have a lot of people that are, I mean, we talk about a thousand homeless. I think that number is low personally, from what I've seen, but I know that that next category of I'm paying 2,800 for this one bedroom, but how do you have families and do all that with such complete attention on having to pay a rent? And I, I don't know what people are doing. There's a program to help home buyers. How do young people really realize, hey, if you don't buy a house when you're young, someday you're going to be the victim of someone else saying, adios muchacho and you're gone. You could have had equity growth all that years, there's all kinds of things that somehow is missed around here, people are running on empty. When I came here and heard there were people working on two and three jobs, I knew this place needed some kind of economic remake. What is that? Plantation mentality, tourism? From outside, it's easy to see. From inside, it's like playing checkers. The people that are in our government often are playing from not looking at the whole game. And that is my number one complaint and why I think I'm qualified here. I've been looking at this game from a distance, keeping my mouth in neutral zone. Bring, not that neutral, but a, a place where I want it all to work, we're an island, we're going to have to hug each other. And everyone, including the homeless, including the everyone. I believe that a shift in mental attitude of the public is going to be the only key that's going to open the door to these problems because they're so overwhelming. And when you're running for office every two years and everyone's, oh, well, we're doing the best we can. Oh yes, well, what do you, we shouldn't rely on the government, the public. I sound Republican as a green, but, but shouldn't we rely on the people? And that low hanging fruit, someone has money to realize if they got involved in this, it wouldn't make a lot, lot of money, but look, it could make money, help the community, look, they get a, some kind of tax credit or some benefit that's going to help us. If we did that and got all the little farms working, all the little people working, you buying from local, doing this, helping build this. How many, I mean, I know I'm all over the map, but it's integrated because we talk about housing. When you drive through Kyle Louie, you see these little old cinder block houses and you go, I got three blocks over, these people have money. These are the people that don't have money that can't build out their houses. What if they could build two or three or multi-rentals on their property? Get a special loan program and now have rentals on their property, help improve inner city redevelopment. So many things can happen that aren't being aggressively explored. And so when I like, I always say, well, I mentioned it from off camera here to these people all these years, now's the time to be on council. So when I'm on council, Jordan, and you're on council, and I'm looking to do things that are wild. I'm going to be asking the private sector to step up. Because the government doesn't need to fund these programs, there's profit in them. There's money in them, the private sector could do it if they're led in that direction. Economic development, whether it's at a council level or a department level, understands where we are and looks at us. You talk about your self-sustainability classes at Maui College, it's more than self-sustainability. Now the catchphrase, I remember, because I've been doing it 30 years talking about this. I said, I'm a weird duck in that I've been talking about this so long and had solutions here so long. And people haven't been listening, so I want a seat at the table. But I want people like you, I want someone who is for the people, understands we have a need. And we can encourage the mayor to declare an emergency and move things forward. Because talking from the outside is not a powerful position and I feel that's, that's such a huge thing. Have you had good response when you've tried to get things done for your behalf or the things you've been trying to do?
You know, it really depends on who you're talking to at the end of the day, I think. And how willing they are to move the needle. That's, that's really what it comes down to, that's why I'm stepping forward is because if I did about 10 years in hospitality business. And one of the things I really liked that I took away from that is that you get to meet people where they're at. And technically, if you're good at your job, you're going to hear, because people are always talking, you're going to hear where they're at and how, what you have to offer for them. Right? And so I agree with you about the fact that we need the community to step up just as much as the government, because the government has its limitations. But it is, the, the county structure is a hard thing to work with and find out who you need to talk to. The learning curve is very, very steep if you're trying to get anything done. And I found more success in problem solving our community issues with partnering with other community organizations often than approaching my council member directly and saying, hey, we have this huge issue, what can be done on a county level? And what I hear a lot of is, well, that can't be done because of this, we can't do this because of that and so on and so forth. And it's that status quo that you can keep it if you want to, but we are in a state of emergency, really. And, and I think that that is not a sensationalizing of our situation here in Maui County. We, we are, you know, and, and it's not because people aren't working hard enough. You know, I would love to see the community rally, I would love to see more civil engagement. But I also recognize that when you're, you've got a family to support, sometimes you've got to put your head down and you just got to do what you can do on that day and then wake up the next day and try to start it again. And when you're faced with a lot of uncertainty, what are you going to do? You know, it's, it's hard to, to think outside of that bubble when your own family is struggling. So, you know, I've, I've seen a, a hesitancy to change and a hesitancy to really talk about the truth in certain positions. And then I have other, you know, council members that I've approached and they're like, we're working on it. And then I see that they actually are working on it, there's a follow through there.
Do you, have you had council members tell you, you know, we can only recommend? We have no control of these department heads and we would, we have been given a no, you can't from the other side. So it's a subtle and interesting world we live in, isn't it?
Well, that's why, you know, what I'm hoping to.
I see that, I see that in you as I'm talking, I hear myself as, I sound like a burst of energy where you're very, very composed and you, like you said, it's a matter of finding someone where they are and working with them from the way they are. So that experience from the hospitality industry will serve you well on council. And working with the department.
I love meeting people where they're at, you know, that's, that's my whole, that's my policy on unsheltered is unsheltered residents here in Maui County, meet people where they're at, ask them what they need and then provide it, you know, it's not, it's not that difficult of a concept and, you know, we are public servants. The mayor has a huge job, he's still a public servant. That's, that's the whole nature of, of the American democracy system is that it's not about your ego, it's not about all the things you think you can get done, you're serving the public. And so if you're not available to listen, then I would really ask what your motivations are at the end.
He would, I, I, if you would ask Mike, I'm sure he would say, I am doing this to serve all the people. I am making my choices based on the best for everyone, I can't just be. So it'll be an interesting discussion with him. You've been a great guest and we have a little time left, but I'm dedicating it to giving you the floor where I shut my mouth and I really give you a chance to really focus on the things you would like the voters to know about you and about what you'd like to be doing. Okay?
Yeah, I can, I can do that. It really comes down to, I don't have all the answers. I have motivations and I have things from my lived experience and what I hear from other people that seem to be top priorities here in Maui County. Housing for all, whether you can afford housing or not, is a huge issue. And I don't think any candidate right now is unaware of that being a problem. What I hope to bring to the table is decision-making and an area of expertise and analysis that means we're not going to be scrambling 50 years later to undo the impacts of the decisions we make now. That we're making decisions that are literally fortifying Maui County so that, you know, I have, I have a young daughter, she's six. And, and I want And, um, and I want for as much as we value Keiki and Kupuna, we have to be making decisions that are actually giving them hope for the future and legitimately taking care of our, of our older populations, you know, because that the wisdom there and, and the, the lived experience isn't lost on me. So it's, um, from my perspective, I want to work for the people. That's why I'm stepping forward. Um, and that might look different based on whomever I'm speaking to. But really there are so many of us who are hardworking, who are showing up for our families, who are showing up for our communities, and we're just keeping that nose barely above water. And that's who I want to work for, you know? The first time I ever got in a pool, it was four foot and I think I was like just right there. And I remember that feeling of just trying not to suck that water straight up my nose. Um, and I feel like that is, it's like a, a metaphor for what we're dealing with right now. The last two years have been an acceleration of what we've known have been issues here in Maui County. It happened so fast. It was like the blink of an eye. Um, while we didn't have money to invest in our community, outside did, and they took that opportunity. And that's not who I'm stepping forward for. I'm stepping for those forward for, for really our, our culture here, which is based around community and taking care of each other, because that's what it is. That's the heart of Maui County is that like, we're here for each other, you know? If you have too much, if you're growing, you know, as someone who has a backyard garden, as someone who, you know, grows the food that I can and the time that I have, if you have too much, you just sit it there. It's going to waste. So you give it to people. You know, you give it to your neighbors. Um, and we become stronger in that. And that's really, that's the foundation I believe in, is how we can make our community network stronger. But right now we're being hit on all sides by these huge tidal waves of, of the housing market, of climate change, of, you know, our children's future really looking, there's so many things. And really, you know, I want my daughter and the other Kiki who are out there growing up to see the example of adults working their butts off for them. So, oh, that there's some hope for the future. Because the other thing too is, as those families leave, the families that are here, if they're struggling, their kids are going to leave. They're going to go other places for opportunities. And so it's like, right now, we want to keep our scholars here. We want to keep people who care about Maui County here. We have to be thinking about them.
You wouldn't be surprised to know that we've been hearing, I've been hearing, we've been talking about it for 30 years here.
I'm not surprised.
It's, that's the hardest thing that is, the people that are saying, we can't do anything. If you feel what Jordan is saying is important to you, you can register and vote. You can get involved to be able to choose leaders who will make it important on their priority list. And, and that's really very important, Jordan. You've, you really exemplify what we're talking about, someone in our community who's stepping up to help improve our community and just participation is, you'll see in these forums. You know, you have a race with three people in the primary. I have seven, which is like, I went crazy.
Halaui is, is a wild, is a wild seat right now. There's a lot of people stepping forward for that.
I asked Tasha, what do you think about this? And she said, well, it's good. It shows there are people that have ideas that want to step up because they want to do things for the community. She's keeping her good attitude. She's a very nice lady and I know that all of her decisions don't meet with my sniff test. And you know, but I'm not, I'm not one to pick on things, but boy, that race is just crowded with bodies. And, uh, if you don't see who everyone is, it would be a shame because some of these groups are making their choices without seeing all the candidates. We all have ideas, powerful ideas that need to be heard by everyone before decisions are made. But, you know, look how long, you know, I, I talk about me doing this for 30 years. You know, I don't mean to say you're probably in your 30s, right? Yes?
Yes, I am.
See, I'm old, people. I've watched people like Jordan. I've watched people like me going long time. She grew up knowing the right thing and the world was already a generation behind. We oldsters come out from wherever you are and vote and be strong with us. Being able to help make the changes for your children and grandchildren and the world, you know? You're in the hospitality industry. You know that we can strengthen the hospitality industry. You don't have to kill it just because we don't want to grow the number of places. There's so many things that are yet to be explored. Jordan, you've been really a great guest here. Anything that you know that you want to make sure you say, I, I don't want to be so, you know, vociferous here that I cut you off. Any things that you really know, you want to be sure that people know before we wrap it up?
I just, I believe in the strength of our community. I really do. And I believe in the, the work ethic and the perseverance of my neighbors, you know, whether we live right next door to each other or not. It's like Kihei is really only six miles away from where I live, but it takes me about an hour to get there, right? But, um, it, it really is, we're all in this together at the end of the day. Um, and we might not agree on exactly the way that things should be taken care of. But, um, to touch on what you said, you know, we are all absolutely trying our best and, um, I just want to say, you know, I, I want to work for you. I want, I want to, to protect your interests, the interests of your children and the interests of our future. Because it looks, it looks pretty uncertain and, um, I, I want to problem solve that, that uncertainty.
Well, Jordan Hocker, you are a very welcomed guest here. And if there's anything ever in the future you want to say and be on my show, self-declared show now, right? For a long time. You're a welcome guest, Jordan Hocker, the up country seat of the county council. But remember all you Mauians, no matter where you are on all three islands, you vote for all the seats. So if you like Jordan and you live on Molokairola'i, you can vote for her. And if you see Schwartz anywhere on the ballot, that's me. You can vote for him too. Jordan, thank you for being here with me and the audience. Uh, it's been a pleasure.
Yeah, thank you so much.
All you out there in, uh, listening land, we hope you'll join us again. Go to Maui Neutral Zone. You can see this again. Go up to YouTube and Google. Jordan, you've been great. You guys out there, you've been great. We hope we'll see you again. Blessings and aloha.
Thank you. Take care.